Hello, Toby.
Hello, Joanna. How are you?
Good. How are you?
I'm marvelous, thank you.
Okay.
I miss my neighbor. I'm back.
Vice President, here we go.
I don't think we're on the air.
Are we on the air? Yes. Well, we're over here. Doesn't say on the air over there.
It does now.
Does now. We're on the air. Perfect.
Okay.
So here we go. 6:30, we have an appointment with the School Building Committee presentation to the Planning Board. And they passed you out this little packet that they'll be referencing, so if you just want to follow along with that, and we can get right into it. Good evening. Thanks for coming. Come on up.
Thank you, Mike Mack. And I'm Chair of the Lunenburg School Building Committee, Vice Chair of the Lunenburg School Committee. I'm very happy to have this opportunity to speak with you. As you are aware, we have been invited by the Massachusetts School Building Authority into a project phase where we are in the midst of completing schematics designs on a new middle-high school. In discussions with the School Building Committee, we wanted to make sure that in this phase of the project that we were able to brief all the key committees in town on where we were with the project. So we have met with the Board of Selectmen. We're meeting with you folks tonight. We'll be meeting with the Finance Committee September 26th. And we're putting together a series of public forums on the project which will happen throughout the fall. The agenda for tonight is before you, so let me just get started. I want to, first of all, offer the fact that the superintendent would usually be doing this piece, but unfortunately, her mom passed away this weekend, and she's unable to attend to this. So...
She's in a coma.
Absolutely. So, first of all, I also just want to thank you folks for your work. As part of our work in the original preliminary designs, the architect has been meeting with all kinds of folks. Marion had an opportunity to meet as well, so that we could make sure that we have a collaborative process. And we've had over 25 meetings at this point with various faculty, staff, parents. We had visioning sessions where we brought in parents, administrators, and teachers to talk about what kind of program we want in the school. But let me get into why the school project, for starters.
And I want to thank you for putting us on your agenda, including us, for your time. We're all volunteers. We all do the best we can. I know you're running crazy with this, and thank you for taking the time to come present that to us again.
Thank you. Thank you. So if we get to the first slide. Okay. "As a result of our last visit from NIESC, the New England Accreditation for Schools and Colleges, they say that the Lunenburg High School site and physical plant do not adequately support all aspects of the educational program and the support services for student learning. As a result of the age of the facility, the poor repair of the building, the limited technological resources and limited availability in the building, the physical plant does not meet the demands of teaching and learning and the basic expectations of a school's physical plant. These concerns dramatically limit the school's ability to meet the educational needs of students." And, you know, as we recall, the school was built in 1957 with an addition in 1960. The existing school lacks suitable spaces for all of our myriad of educational programs. For those folks who haven't been in the building, or at least haven't been there in a while, the science labs are the original science labs from the late 1950s, you know, before there was computers or, you know, the technological piece that we now need. The building systems have exceeded their useful lives, and the existing building is not handicapped accessible. And just, you know, one more thing on the building that some of you may or may not know, but the roof has been repaired but not replaced. It was replaced in some spots, but not in all because of financial concerns. So what happens is every year when the snow melts, there is a roof leak somewhere in the building. It gets patched and repaired at that spot, and then another leak appears someplace else. I know last spring, we actually had to close down a bathroom within one of the buildings because of the leak. And when we say about leak, it's not just the fact that the water is intrusive and dangerous, it's that it's coming through tile that contains asbestos. The existing capacity of the high school, which is currently housing students in 8 through 12, and we have approximately 600 students, and it's 98,000 gross square feet. Based on the current MSBA standards, the high school for 445 students serving grades 9 through 12 should be 118,000 gross square feet. So for even the folks that we're being served, it's undersized for the population. Also, if there's questions regarding the 9 through 12, I think we'll talk about that. Nope. Let me just talk about that briefly. How we arrived at a 6 through 12 configuration. Three, four years ago, Subcommittee of the School Committee looked at how the school district could configure, given, you know, the current enrollment population, the expected enrollment population, and the fiscal constraints that we're facing, given, you know, local assistance from the state being problematic over the last couple of years, and, you know, even modest increases in costs have outstripped, you know, our ability and our resources. So the committee recommended to the school committee, which adopted a three-school model, as the ultimate model for the school district, for both educational reasons and for financial reasons. But primarily, the thinking was is that if we could create a middle-high school, we could preserve what was good about middle school within a middle-high school program. The Lunenburg Middle School, as I said, will serve, the middle-high school will serve 6 through 12. It's co-located. It addresses both programmatic needs. You'll see later on, when we show you the layout, how we've envisioned a building that is, that has a middle school area and a high school area. The new school will improve the educational program. It will also provide developmentally appropriate and sustainable curricula over a whole bunch of things. One of the problems that we ran into in trying to be fiscally thoughtful is trying to share certain special services throughout three buildings. And what you wind up is downtime with a teacher running from one building to another building to another building. So you imagine the flexibility that you get when you have a teacher within a building that can serve perhaps sometime a middle school student, sometime a high school student. Certainly, things like the music program, the foreign language program, those areas where it's more adaptable to kind of see those kinds of sharing arrangements. And also, because of this, we're going to actually take out one of the big transitions, which is that middle-high school transition, because we're already there. We've already begun that. And in fact, the building will allow us to think thoughtfully, maybe even about creating an eighth-grade academy that would begin to introduce students to the high school curriculum, the high school, you know, way of, you know, going around buildings and so on. And it's, I said, as I said before, it's consistent with the recommendations that the reconfiguration committee made in 2011. So let's see, the proposed, as you can see, this is a graph which shows you the three schools. We can go on to the next slide. I spoke a little bit earlier about the collaborative process. We've had, well, I'm thinking we're now, like McDonald's, we should probably up that number, because every time we have another meeting, we should add it. So we have had over 25 meetings and workshops to date, including the visioning sessions that were done at the school district level. We have had meetings with the School Building Authority, the Lunenburg School Committee. We have working groups. We have the Lunenburg School Building Committee. And we've met with also all the town regulatory officers. We've met with the Chief of Police, the Fire Department, we've met with DBW, we've met with planning. And so we've attempted to make as much of a collaborative process as possible and to ensure that, you know, people have an avenue to give input into the process. By the way, and we'll talk about this again later, as part of the avenue, we have a Facebook page and a website that's regularly updated, that's specific to the project. Let's talk about the schedule a little bit, on the milestones. You can see that this goes back, well, you know, there's years behind this. This actually starts years before the schedule starts. But in the spring of 2013, we started the preliminary options analysis. This was as a result of the town meeting that authorized us to enter into a feasibility study. And in April, we, the School Building Committee met, looked at the options that were presented to us through the analysis of our architect and our project manager, and it told us certain things. The options were you could do a build add-on, you could do a, just leave the building alone and put money into it, or you could do a new building. And after analysis of what was doable, first of all, an addition renovation would be extremely disruptive to the existing educational program. It would require us actually to vacate large parts of the building while we were doing the renovation, which might mean additional costs for relocatable buildings, additional costs if we needed to figure out some way of re-upping the TC Passios as a backup. It would incur those costs. And after the analysis of all of those costs and the educational impact, we, the School Building Committee voted to have a new 6 through 12 project, which subsequently was supported by the Mass School Building Authority. So what we're looking at now is we're heading towards a submittal of a schematic design package to the Mass School Building Authority. At that time, we should have the schematic designs completed, and our estimator should have the cost estimate completed. So at that point, we'll have a clearer idea of what our costs will be in terms of the total project cost. And we will be looking, then, for a town meeting either in December or January to seek support of the voters. And assuming that we have a positive response, which I am assuming, we will have construction that will begin in the mid-fall of 2014. There will actually be some early pieces that can be done even before then, that will allow us to sort of get a jump start. There's some site things that can be done earlier on. And then we expect substantial completion of the building by June of 2016, and doors opening on September of 2016. Then in the fall, the existing school building would be demolished. I spoke earlier about, we can get to that next slide, about the, we'll do this quickly since I spoke about it earlier, about the preliminary option study, which included renovating the existing high school, renovate and expand the high school, and new construction. And as I said, in looking at what was best educationally and fiscally, for instance, if we just renovated the existing high school, what we'd still have is a school that would ultimately not meet accreditation by NIESC, because it's undersized, because of the age of its current infrastructure in terms of the science labs, plus the cost involved in just the renovation is enormous. And we would still, we would have to replace roofs, windows. There's a great deal of work around asbestos abatement that would need to be done, handicapped accessibility. And so that was rejected by the School Building Committee. The addition and renovation, as I said, when all is said and done, the preliminary analysis of costs showed that the difference between an addition renovation and a new construction would not be substantially enough to justify the disruption of the students. We would have, as I said, we would have to move many students out of the building for periods of time in order to do the renovations, either into relocatable buildings, which would be at an additional cost. And at this point, now I'd like to introduce Charles Hay of Tap Hay Associates. At a great majority of these meetings, Charlie's been present to hear what people's vision for the school is, and I thank him for it.
My pleasure. I'm pleased to be here, and good evening. I will go through this quickly, but let me describe for you the preliminary proposal. I think it's important to note that it continues to be preliminary, and it really will continue to be preliminary until the sort of more final designs are prepared after funding. These early phases give the opportunity to begin the planning process, to begin to develop costs, to get the MSBA onboard in terms of approving the project. However, it is a process that takes time in the project, and the design gets built over time in terms of the design. So there's a lot of input that goes into these projects, and a lot of input will continue to go into the project. The slide in front of you is a proposed site plan for the project. You have any questions you want to answer?
Hi.
Okay. The site plan in front of you is a proposal for the project. Just to describe to you what's going on, that's Oak Ave up there, that is Mass Ave down there. That is the Passios, that's the existing turf field, and that's Turkey Hill Middle School. The proposal is to maintain the existing high school fully operationally during construction, and I'll talk about phasing in just a minute, and construct a new school on the current two grass football fields. What this allows us to do ultimately is to have multiple means for vehicular access onto the site. It also allows us to have adequate vehicular stacking for pickup and drop-off, which doesn't occur now, so that's a big bonus for the project. And one of the real concerns about the facility that you have, which is problems around, as everyone who picks up and drops off children know, there are traffic issues there. So the new proposal very much addresses a lot of those traffic issues and the problems around queuing. The proposal has parking up near the school. It has queuing pickup space for cars that is separate from buses. It accommodates 10 buses stacked. And then there is satellite parking for students, which is a significant increase over what they have now. There is also two new grass fields to be constructed in front of the new building, and then a practice field down on Mass Ave where there is now a recreational soccer field there. But the proposal is to improve that so that it can be used as needed by the school, as well as the community. And the hope is to resurface the tennis courts and to maintain fully the existing turf field. So let's go to the next slide. So this is a proposed floor plan, and again, it's a preliminary concept, but it gives you a pretty good idea of what we're thinking about. It has a separate high school wing and a separate middle school wing, and those are organized very differently. The middle school is organized into teams. The high school is organized more departmentally. In the front is administration, which really acts as a control point at the heart of the school. And then the block up at the top is really a community space as well as, as well as space to be used by the students, which is great, which means that this part of the building could be closed off in the evening. It could be used, the theater could be used, the gym could be used, the cafeteria could be used, while the rest of the school is effectively closed off. And that's a very nice feature of this design. The students enter through two different doors, a middle school entrance and a high school entrance, but that's really only for students at pickup and drop-off time. The rest of the day, all public visitors, staff, et cetera, will enter through the main entrance. There are obviously shared spaces in this school, which is one of the nice things about this model, is that these shared, you can really maximize the shared spaces that all these students access. In other words, you don't have to build two buildings, a middle school and a high school with two gyms that you have to heat and cool. You don't have to build a building that has two cafeterias and two kitchens. You get to create, you service a larger student body with less core spaces. So it's a very efficient model, and it is also, I think, a very good one, educationally. So the upper floor simply has the classroom stacking, and the thought is that in the middle school, the sixth grade will be on the first floor, so they're their own kind of academy. They're coming in, that's the first year, it's sort of a transition between elementary and middle. And then seventh and eighth is on the second floor together, and then obviously, the high school students are moving through the building. There's also a greenhouse to replace the greenhouse we'd be removing. Let me, let's go to the next slide. The, I wanted to talk just briefly about the construction phasing, which is important. People often have questions about, gee, how are you going to build a new building without disrupting the ongoing program? But this site really lends itself very effectively to the idea of a replacement building, because we can enter, we can have a construction entrance off of Oak Ave, we can build our new building on those two football fields, and essentially, the existing high school will remain fully operational with essentially no inconvenience to staff or students in that all of the parking, all of the vehicular access is off of Mass Ave. So fundamentally, the only change is that you are losing for a while, a couple of fields, and that is a significant concern. However, I think LOXI is already, Superintendent Schools is already working to come up with solutions to those issues that allows all of the middle school and high school athletic programs to fully operate, and you still have the turf field, which will remain fully open during construction, which is actually a lot more than a lot of these schools get when they do construction projects. They often don't get any fields, and they just have to play all their games away for three years. And you're not, at least you have the use of this turf field during construction, which is pretty great. So the phasing allows us to build the new building, occupy it, then tear down the old building, and finish the site work. So it's a very good plan from a phasing point of view in terms of managing inconvenience for students. Let's go to the next one. Very quickly, I'll just go through some of the early kind of image ideas for the building. Here you can see the classroom wing, the admin in the center, that block I talked about with the public spaces on the left, and you can see the loop for parents and the loop for buses, and the visitor parking with the turf field in the background. This is kind of an image showing the entranceway and the classroom wing in the front with landscaping. This shows the cafeteria. The nice thing about where we have the cafeteria is it's sort of a public space, it's got a lot of glass, it'll be very open and inviting, you can really see what's going on in there. So it's a nice, a nice kind of way of people coming up to the building. And we created kind of a courtyard in the front, which should be a nice outdoor space for waiting for your ride, or just hanging out after school or before school, in a kind of a safe environment. This is looking up the hill at the media center and the greenhouse. We will still have this significant grade change that you have today at that site. So like, when you're on Mass Ave, you will be looking up at this building, because those fields are higher than where the current high school is, which should be a very nice feature, because it's going to be like a school on a hill. And I think from Mass Ave, it'll be a very nice view up to see, to see the building. That's looking at the back of the middle school from the turf field. So again, from the turf field, you will be looking up at the building as well, because the floor plate generally is at the higher level. And that is sort of just early images, but we're imagining a masonry building with aluminum windows, very standard for this kind of building. We want, we want building materials which are going to be very maintainable and rugged and have a long life. Do you want me to talk to this? You want me to talk to this?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie. I just wanted to note that, I talked about it earlier, we have several sites that people can go for additional information. We can, our website for the School Building Project is up there. And we can also be followed on Twitter, as you can see, and please like us on Facebook. We went live three weeks ago, was it? I think it was about three weeks ago, and in the space of about 48 hours, we were up to 150 likes. And we'd encourage you to, you know, copy all of your, you know, Facebook friends onto that page. And I think the only other thing that I wanted to mention about the collaboration, which I neglected to do so earlier, was to talk about the School Building Committee itself. Because again, we have a collaborative process where we have a member from the Finance Committee, a member from the Board of Selectmen. Mr. Lockwood thankfully is a member for the Planning Board, and we have members of the community at large, as well as the superintendent. And am I leaving anybody out? I think I've covered it. So we have, we're hoping that, you know, we're getting, you know, a dialogue on this. I'll open it to any questions.
Okay, we are on the end. Go ahead, Matthew.
Question about Oak Ave. You're proposing a new entrance onto Oak Ave. Has there been a capacity analysis for the road? Are there any improvements proposed for capacity?
Charlie? There's not been a full-blown traffic study done on Oak Ave, given that it's a low, a fairly low-volume roadway. I think that the traffic study would probably only be beneficial if there was the assumption that you would need to do a signal or something like that, and the assumption was that wouldn't be required here. In terms of improvements to Oak Ave, no, that was not anticipated as part of the project, other than obviously curb cut and any associated drainage and associated signage. Unfortunately, the Massachusetts School Building Authority, who funds these projects, doesn't reimburse for any costs for off-site improvements. So communities tend to think very long and hard before they consider any off-site improvements, because if they were to, they would be paying for them. I mean, the MSBA is going to reimburse this, is going to reimburse the town considerably over 50% of the construction costs, and, no, excuse me, the project costs, the entire project costs. So that's a real positive. However, they don't reimburse for off-site infrastructure improvements. So we tend to tread cautiously there. It's very rare, I can't think of one, of a school project that has tried to fund off-site improvements.
Charlie just mentioned something that I also neglected to mention, which I wanted to reiterate, which is that once the project is approved by the MSBA, we're right now, we're at the base reimbursement of 53.53% for the total project costs. We're expecting that that could go up by as much as two points, because we're going to have the building as a chip building, and you can get up to a point for that. And there are some points involved in evaluating our ongoing maintenance program. We were expecting some points out of that. So, you know, it could be, you know, as high as 55, perhaps more.
Matthew, do you have more?
Oh, yeah, of course.
No, keep on.
Lead accreditation, green building?
As I said, it's, rather than lead, we're doing... As I said, it's, rather than lead, we're doing the...
Mass chips.
Mass chip. Oh, oh, okay.
Very similar. It's a sustainable design. It's, it will be a sustainable building, it'll be a green building, and it has, very similar to lead in how it's organized, same kind of criteria. It goes through a very thorough, I can tell you, a very thorough review process with, with mass chips. And, in the end, you have to, it has to be approved before you get those incentive points with the Massachusetts School Building Authority. But it is what the, what the MSBA prefers, in terms of, but it will be of sustainable design.
So, it's a state program versus a...
It is actually starting California. It's Calif, it was, but, but it's the collaborative for high-performance schools. And the Mass, Mass has its own version of it, which the MSBA has been, has been kind of shepherding. So, it is a, it is a, you know, a fully, a full-blown program, very similar to lead.
Very good, thank you. Why don't you come back to me? Please.
Okay. Toby?
Just a couple of questions relative to the parking, down where the parking is for the existing high school today. Is that going to remain, is that student parking? Okay. Is there any student parking on the upper level where the new high school is?
The, that's really an administrative question, but the concept is no. The concept is, a student will get a permit, they'll be in the student lot, and then staff and visitors will get the lots close to the building.
Close to the building? Okay, what I see here is still a parking lot that is close to the Passio's school?
Yes.
Is that parking going to be for the Passio's school, or is that considered part of the high school?
It is not being, the, the, the spaces in front of the Passios are not being included in the count, and the spaces to the side of it are, it depends on which count we use, could be either. Part of the issue is, we don't know the future of the Passios. So, we're sort of...
That's why I'm asking the question.
Right, we're sort of holding that, we're sort of holding that in abeyance, because we don't know the answer. Now, I will say, since this site plan was developed, we've done a more analysis of parking needs, and I think we're going to try to increase the parking shown on our site plan, to accommodate staff and visitors. Because, we've had a fairly intensive go-around with the, with the school administration about how many spaces they really want. Right now, we're a little bit above where they are now, and I think they would like more of a buffer, in terms of spaces.
Okay. Second question is, I can't tell from the plan here, but is there sidewalk, sidewalk access from both Mass Ave and Oak Ave to the school?
Yes.
Okay. And my last question is, is my, and this is just an assumption, if the Passio's school goes away, was there any consideration in putting a second gymnasium with the new high school? Because, based on the functional utility for the sports and things in town, to lose a gymnasium in this transition just puts a burden back on the town to account for it somewhere. So was there any thought to give into putting a second gym into that 6th through 12th high school?
What, what we have in the 6th through 12th high school, besides the large gym, are two other areas that are, there's a exercise area, if you look down the, that side of the wing, there's a, there are two larger, there are two spaces that are not gymnasium spaces, that could be used for things like dance, or aerobic, or, you know, those kinds of things, or for weight training. There are two spaces that have been left for those kinds of activities. In terms of providing for another community gym, no, that's not part of the project.
Okay. Well, I was looking as a community gym, but as a gym that, that were...
The gym is designed to the MSBA specifications. You know, for instance, you know, people would have asked for an indoor track, and that was not, that could not be accommodated under the MSBA reimbursement. It would be fully funded by the town if we were to do that.
Okay.
Is it fair to say Charlie, that proposed gym is twice the size of the existing? I don't know if it's twice the size, but it is a bigger gym. It will allow for two cross courts simultaneously with a divider in middle, which means you could have two, not, you wouldn't have a varsity competition, but you could have practices in parallel, so there are two courts.
Okay.
Let me have that now, too.
Yeah, but, I'm just looking at it also from the perspective, is that you're now pushing two additional grades in, to the middle school. You still only have one gym, you move more students in there. So, for them to have the appropriate practice time for the youth sports, whether it's a middle school team, the high school teams, freshman teams, you're now, again, just limited to one gym, because I think the objective was to keep everything within the facility, rather than taking the 6th, the 6th, 7th, and 8th grade and taking them back over to the middle.
Sure. Now, we, in a meeting, in a meeting with the, there was actually, two of the more extensive meetings we had was with the phys ed staff. And, and their, their belief is, is that through scheduling, because the gym, as we said, is larger, you could actually run two classes simultaneously within the gym, because of the way that it's set up. And, you know, as I said, there are also these two other areas that could be used for, you know, some other form of activity, you know, aerobics, or dance class, or weight room. And the feeling was, is that the space that we're providing is more than the space that we're eliminating.
Well, can I just piggyback on your question, too? The youth basketball team is separate than the, the high school basketball?
Sure.
Right, those are two separate?
Sure.
Is there someone from the youth program involved?
Absolutely, there, there's actually, there's a meeting going to be scheduled. It should have been scheduled previously, but due to the superintendent's absence, we had, we had to put off scheduling it. But there'll be a meeting between the athletic director, and Mr. Londa, and the several other interested parties in town that are looking to, and not just the, you know, the, the youth basketball, we're talking to the soccer league, and the, and the football folks as well. Because we want to make sure that everybody understands what we'll have during the phasing process. I mean, once we're done, we'll have, you know, better than we currently have, obviously. But we're only talking about how we deal with this during the phasing process.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I'm good.
Yeah, also a little concerned about the parking, the location and the quantity of it. I mean, just so far away from the building as it is, if I have that last parking spot, and I gotta walk all the way around the field and around the building to my high school entrance, it's about 1,000 feet away. And also, being on the Passios reuse committee, when we come up with another use for that building, there's not much parking immediately next to it. And, again, that larger parking area for students is quite far away from that building to be utilized. So...
And the primary uses it as an ad hoc, because I know, when I go to functions at the primary, they ask me to park up there in carpool, because there's not enough parking at the primary.
These are things that we're addressing. In terms of the distance, I think part of this is just being driven by the site needs. I mean, it's just, it's just going to be a fact that we've got some young men and women that are going to have to walk a little bit.
Yeah, and, but, again, with just reusing that other site, the Passios building, any parking that you could put in that area enhances what we can do with the space.
Again, we would be happy to use that space, we don't want to plan on it while we don't know what's going to happen to the Passios. Once we know what the recommendation will be, and once that's, that's done, I'm sure that we can relook at this again.
I do have another question, unless you have another one. Just for my, for my purposes, the existing lights that are on the old football field, are they going to be reused on the new fields that are going to be created out front?
We think there's a possibility of reusing some of them. Some of them we can't, because they're mounted to the backside of the turf field lights. And, but I think that the landscape architect thinks there's the potential for some reuse of those heads. But I mean, the presumption is that we're going to have new sports lighting, whether, we may be able to reuse some of it. But, but I think that we're assuming now that will be brand-new bleachers, brand-new ticket booth, brand-new sports lighting, or some, some combination of reuse plus new. And, obviously, new nets and new, all that.
Okay. Also, is a function of this, building this new high school, does it include any of the renovations to the existing tennis courts that are there?
Yeah, we're assuming that we're going to do new tennis courts. So, the landscape architects have the opinion, we probably have to do more than simply resurface them. So I think our assumption is, we're going in there and taking out what's there, putting in new compacted fill, and redo, completely rebuilding them.
Okay, I just, I haven't been to any of the meetings or anything, but I just didn't know if that at all would have been talked to. Thank you.
Damon, are you good?
For now.
Nathan?
I'm all set.
I know you're on the committee.
Yeah, thanks.
I'm all set.
Wonderful, I really appreciate the opportunity to...
I thank you for coming.
I do have one more question.
Oh, go ahead.
Okay. As I, as I look at some of those sidewalk paths, are there going to be lighting along those sidewalks? So when there are evening activities, if somebody is parked in the old parking area, that there will be lights that are provided for people to get access up to the school?
Yes. There, yeah, there's, there will, there will be some lighting along...
Yeah, we would do low, we do low level, it's all going to be full cutoff, both because your, the butters are going to want that, and because we have to do this for sustainable reasons. But, yes, we probably have pedestrian-scale walkway lighting.
Okay.
And then obviously, we have parking lighting.
Yep. Okay.
And the chair had a question. The director?
On the gymnasium, and I understand Toby's concern, I had heard it before, it's going to be a larger gymnasium. Now, you have two sets of, you know, 6 to 8, 9 to 12. Is there going to be a divider, so that gymnasium can be divided, and you...
Yeah, there, there, the, the plan is, is that there's a net divider that splits the two spaces. We're actually designing the building that has separate locker rooms for middle school and for high school.
Okay.
Oh, nice.
Now, the other question I have is on the schedule. Whoops, wrong paper, sorry about that. A lot of people have stopped in the office and asked, what, when are we going to get to vote on this? My assumption is that it will go to town meeting?
Correct.
And it will be in the, what we call the fall town meeting, which might be December or January, past the fall. And that is correct. That is the first attempt at passing?
Correct.
This. Okay, all right. And so therefore, all of the others is speculation that the town will pass this. It's a ballot question, correct?
Correct.
Does it still have to go to town meeting first, and then the ballot?
Well, actually, from what I understand, it doesn't, but that's traditionally the way that we've been doing it.
Yeah, that's why I'm asking.
So, it is town meeting and ballot?
Correct.
Okay. Because I saw on the milestones, you have, you have the town meeting, but you don't have the ballot question. So that's why I didn't know if there was a ballot. I asked Marion, because I thought it went to ballot, but it wasn't on your milestone.
Yeah, it will be going to ballots, town meeting and ballot, and town meeting, I believe, is it?
You just have to put some highlights on the top of it.
Yeah.
You can break it up here.
It's a, it's a two-thirds, I believe, is that, because it's a, right?
I think so.
Debt borrowing question requires two-thirds?
I think that the tradition has been, it goes to town meeting, it gives people time to, and the opportunity to address it again, and then it goes to the ballot, as I understand.
Well, hopefully, if we've done our job, all of the questions will be answered before town meeting.
Okay.
No, and I would recommend you keep doing what you're doing, because the more people hear about it, the more informed, and the better chance you have of getting a intelligent vote. That they understand it, they understand the need, they understand all the work you did, and they support it.
Thank you very much again for the opportunity.
So, just keep getting on the air and talking it up. Because you do a great job.
Thank you.
You did a great job.
I have one more question.
Oh, sure.
About capacity, I mean, looking at the footprint, it looks a little bit bigger, but the current building is already undersized. How much additional capacity?
Oh, it's substantially bigger than the existing building. Existing building is 98,000 square feet, and the new building will be...
168,000.
168,000 square feet.
As far as, as far as accreditation for what, for what needs to be done, as far as the number of students, what...
It will meet accreditation.
What level above the current?
Well, currently, the assumption would be, it would be 22 students per classroom, there are something like 40 classrooms, is that correct, Charlie? There is room within the building, should there be additions that we are unexpected to handle anything, that would still remain within accreditation.
Because I believe there are, what, 100 to 200 units currently under review for the next few years to be built in the town?
Yes. And they, they did get numbers from the planning board, and I know the selectmen at their last meeting are very much looking into that as well.
So those hard numbers have been incorporated into?
Yes.
Yes.
They have.
Thank you.
And there, there is some, among the board of selectmen, and they're researching that and getting that correct data.
Good.
And, and that's, you know, we can ask of the security, and you're going to have the, the building secured?
Oh, absolutely. It will have the total double-door system, where you have to come in.
Yeah, exactly.
You have to be buzzed in, there'll be somebody that will identify you before you can be buzzed through the second door.
Right. With state funding, they have to do everything.
Wow. Excellent.
And, and I would recommend, I've said this with, with Mike many a times, Ipswich Middle School has the same concept, and it's a beautiful school. I, I get to do the magazine kickoff there every year, and it's a phenomenal, the auditorium there, it's just phenomenal. They have a daycare, and it's, it's beautiful. It's a beautiful facility. And it's very much that the children, like we're doing, you have your high school on one side, your middle school, and it works, it works very, very well.
Great. Thank you again.
Thank you.
And I'm sure we'll be back.
We look forward to that. Okay, moving right along. Thank you so much for coming in, and if there's anything we can help in the process, please let us know. Anything you need, any daddy you need, any, whatever we can do.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, nice meeting you both, thanks for taking the time to come in.
Thank you.
Okay. Minutes. I would accept a motion to approve the minutes that were emailed for the August 12, 2013 meeting.
I have a comment.
On the minutes?
The...
Yes, go ahead, please.
The, the reuse committee that Mr. Londa's on, is that the school reuse committee, or the building reuse committee?
I believe it's the building, because there may be a domino effect.
Okay, because there's two, there, it says school reuse committee in the minutes.
Yeah, when I write our agenda, it says building.
I'm sorry, I missed what Damon said.
Oh, the, the, the minutes report, the...
The, the school, right, I see that.
Say, school reuse committee. And I believe it's the building reuse committee.
Is it the building?
It's the building.
Okay.
Not a big deal, but...
Will you update that?
I am doing that.
Also, I've noticed the, the mobile station, Leominster Shirley Road, that has been referred to as the mobile station, and it's been referred to differently on the agenda versus the minutes?
It is a mobile station.
What is the other way it's referred to? What is the other name for that?
What, the Lunenburg, what's the name of the gas station?
Lancaster Farms? Lancaster Farms? It's not...
No, it's some farm.
It's not, near Park.
Yeah.
Okay, some farms, yes.
We take these right off the disc, that's why it might have a little bit of different wording, but I'll review them in, before.
Also, the, the very, well, board comment, it says easements have to be approved by the Board of Selectmen. It's really effectively, the easements upon town property need to be approved by the town selectmen.
I'm sorry, didn't get what he said.
Easement, on the last page, I'm assuming tri-count?
Board compound?
Yeah, easements.
There are numerous easements noted on the plan. Noted the reviewing engineers are not catching errors on the plan. Mr. Lockwood noticed that when a plan comes before, they pay attention to easements. Easements have to be approved by the Board of Selectmen.
Town property, not all easements. That sounds like a...
Again, this was taken off the thing, I'll double-check. Okay? No, I will correct it.
Okay, but let me rephrase, because if, if one of the board says, it's still town, that the Board of Selectmen only approved the town easements.
Okay.
Okay.
We did, we did back-check that, didn't we?
Yeah, no, that's fine. And Marion, Marion added those in. Anything else?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Okay. All in favor of accepting the minutes as amended?
Aye. Oh, wait, do we get a motion?
Oh, I thought we did for the discussion, I'm sorry. A motion to accept, go ahead, Nathan.
Motion to approve the minutes of, uh, August twelfth?
As amended.
As amended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Document you need to sign, thank you. Committee reports. Matthew, M.J.T.C.
We had no meeting on August?
Okay. M.R.P.C., my meeting is tomorrow night. Nathan, school building committee?
Uh, well, we, yeah, in addition to the update tonight, there's a meeting tomorrow night.
Okay, perfect. Building reuse committee, Damon?
All right. Um, last week, we met at the Passio's building. We got a tour from John Londa. Um, I got a basic layout of the building. If anyone's interested, I can send that to Marion. But, um, John explained some of the uses that are in there now. Um, there was a flat collaborative renting out one portion of the building, paying, um, I think thirty thousand dollars a year about to use that. And, um, we have some, Lunenburg Cable has an office in there. Um, there's some administration for the school in there, and there's also a daycare and extended day program operating out of one of the wings. Um, overall, the building was in pretty decent upkeep. Uh, Mr. Londa had, up until recently, no intention of shutting that building down, so he was doing periodic, um, renovations on it. Even the boilers, there's three boilers in there that have been put in since the year two thousand, brand-new things sitting there. Um, overall, I mean, cosmetically, the building is rough, but as far as operationally, not bad.
The buildings.
Not bad at all. But, again, cosmetically, there's a lot to be done, because there's never time to replace that. There's always something wrong to be worked on. Um, we did get into asbestos a little bit. Um, there's quite a bit in there, but just a reminder, whether we reuse it or knock it down, you still have to abate it, so there's no, it's kinda hard to figure those dollars in as a savings anywhere, cause it still has to be taken care of. Um, uh, over time, um, in the white list that he put together, the EDA issues were part of it. Most of the ADA and handicap accessibility items have been fixed already. Um, so that's almost up to date. And, um, I mean, the building was in good shape. Um, if something were to happen and the new school didn't get approved, there's no giant hurdle where that couldn't be reused as a school still. And, um, we're gonna go forward and looking into what we can do as far as other possible uses. Building's not in bad shape.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else to report? Anybody have questions for Damon before I move on?
Questions, questions for what?
Damon?
Oh, no.
Okay. Capital Plan Committee, Marion?
The whole packet to every department will go out September third.
Okay, perfect.
They have, we have a schedule that, of return, that Carrie needs to have before she can proceed.
Wonderful. Okay. Any questions, Capital Plan? All right. Planning Directors' Report, three hundred West Waylmer, three hundred Holman Street, Sandra Lane?
There is no present action. The Land Use Committee that was appointed by the Board of Selectmen is looking into, um, the particulars concerning the land and so forth. They have not taken it out of chapter. So the Planning Board and the Conservation Commission at this time does not need to, uh, send in a comment to the Board of Selectmen. Uh, when they make a report, uh, which will go directly to the Board of Selectmen, and I copied here, um, then there will be time for you to decide on, on what recommendation that this board will make to the Board of Selectmen. But the principals have not taken it out of chapter. So you have nothing to comment, so to speak.
Okay. Any questions? Public Document Access via Internet.
Well, you all ought to be very happy, cause we're coming along. And Toby, you weren't here, but, um, as I said, this IT man is working with us, and he is not quite ready, but he is getting it set up, and probably in a week or two, he will be all set up. And I have changed and added it to the forms that go out to developers and engineers, so they know that that's number one on the list-
Perfect.
-that they have to provide. And also, the Survey Monkey. He is just waiting for the financial end of it, and then he will come and work with us on it. And I, um, am very optimistic because-
New England Farms.
Yeah, that's it. New England Farm, thank you. Um, I'm very optimistic that we'll have other, um, technical advantages in the future.
Okay. M.R.P.C., Master Planning status?
M.R.P.C., Master Planning. Wait a minute. Uh, what happened was, we had trouble with our, um, here, let's just keep passing them down, with our computers to get these to you in the Thursday afternoon, and Steve was not available. Is there any, do we need more?
I think we're covered.
Okay.
No, we need one more, I'm sorry.
One, okay.
I have mine in my packet.
Oh, you have it?
Yes.
Okay, so, um, and we're sorry about that, but there was just no other way that we could get it to you. That's the information they're coming, going to be bringing forth. Joanna had talked to me about, uh, speaking with him about getting not only data out, but moving towards some action-looking plans and so forth. So that will be forthcoming very shortly. Also, I wanna say that those, the LTA, um, are not a cost to us. And, um, it does give us the opportunity to have the data, but, and Joanne, Madam Chair is absolutely correct that we need to see something more concrete.
Well, there's no, let me, cause you keep saying there's no, there's no fee, there's no fee to the town. The state's paying M.R.P.C. to do this work.
The Delta.
Right.
We paid to have them advise us and composite, um, certain ideas, and so that we can take their information, their professionalism, and as we work with the town center. But it is the economic element of the master plan, which includes the town center, which is where that was, uh, the board had noted the focus that they wanna be. We have to keep close contact with Damon, because as they make the recommendations for the school, for the Passio School, whatever way they would go, that will affect your town center.
Yes.
But we'll have much more upfront positive in the next month or so.
But the, the grants we got-
Delta, we do not pay for. The element, we do pay for.
But the state pays for the delta?
Yes.
That's what I keep trying to say. So the M.R.P.C. is still getting paid to provide a service to us. We were just fortunate enough, because we applied for a grant and got the grant.
Yes.
Yes, that's what I'm saying. Yes, I know, I know that the town didn't pay, but it's not a free service. M.R.P.C. is providing us.
Providing it.
It's a state grant that we took the time to apply for-
That's right.
-in your busy day.
Yes.
And we got the grant, and the state gave money for that to happen.
Yes, and that's very clear, Madam Chairman. All I was saying, it wasn't coming out of the-
Out of the town budget, right. Exactly.
So I have a question.
Yes.
Is that, is that in addition to the guaranteed time that we get from M.R.P.C.?
The guaranteed time?
Yeah, or ours?
Um, yes, I think, well, in, within the next, cause they have to also report to, to Delta. Um, I haven't got a definite timetable, because they're working on it, and, but as soon as I get one, I will pass it on to the board. And if you wish me to inquire, to have them set one, I'd be very glad to do that.
I'm not sure that answered my question. Is, are those, the, the grant that we applied for, is that above and beyond the guaranteed M.R.P.C. time that we get?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Are we all set with M.R.P.C.?
I believe so.
Perfect. Force Corp. Corp. on three oh five Lemmonster Shirley Road?
Wait a minute, let me find my place here. Where are we?
Take your time. Force Corp. Lemmonster Shirley Road.
Oh, Force?
Yep.
They have put in an application. This is sort of a, of, one that, you know, you may not be familiar with. They went to ZBAA, they got a use permit. They can work on what is existing on that property, but we have a letter from Mike that says we need to do a development plan review for the new building and the land surrounding the building. Uh, they brought in, um, an application in the tri-party, and then they only had two plans. They can't come under the, this new way of doing it, because they did it before, but I sent them back, cause they need more than two plans. So that we have a plan that goes to the seven areas, and then a plan for each of you. And then we will do a development plan review.
Okay. New England Farms, Lemmonster Shirley Road, weekly update?
The New England Farms, um, has told me that they, uh, Mike is out on vacation, and he went down before he left a couple days, and they're going along fine. There's no problem. He's inspected it, and they're going to carry Mobil and Dunkin' Donuts.
And Honey Farms.
And Honey Farms.
Yeah, there's a sign outside on the fence-
Yeah.
-that says it's going to be a Honey Farms, Mobil Gas, and Dunkin' Donuts.
Yeah, right.
Okay.
I've had a lot of people ask, just drop in and ask me that question, okay?
Emerald Place?
Emerald Place, uh, weekly update was scanned to you. Do you have it in your hand, or do you want me to grab one?
Nope.
I'm sorry, did someone say something?
I'm good. With Emerald Place, yeah, I saw the update.
Me too. Tri-Town Landing?
Tri-Town Landing, there really is no update as far as Tri-Town Landing is concerned. Um, we double-checked the numbers of, uh, schoolchildren in Buildings One and Two, and anticipating for Building Three, because it won't, we won't know that until October. And the other thing is that we, I've done all the reports that we need to do, and beside the school, in our office, um, the assessors had to get very involved in this. Harold told me he has never seen anything so complicated. When they got all through, and he spent a great deal of time on this, um, she said, "We still do not qualify this year." There's, it looks to me like the bigger cities, the bigger amount of students are the ones that's going to apply. Harold has written, emailed this, this lady who's in charge, and asked to put that in writing. He's done it a couple of times, and I've done it. And, uh, she says, "Yes, she will," but it hasn't been forthcoming, cause she's so busy.
Okay.
But we need to get it in writing.
What are we asking for in writing?
Forty S funds, instead of, you know, how we get the forty R's?
I, I understand the forty S. What do we, what is the question that we're asking?
We're asking if we qualify to receive forty S money.
We haven't qualified the last two years, correct?
Right, that's right.
And we're trying to now qualify for this year.
Has it been clearly defined as to what it takes to qualify?
Yes, not under us, but she has, they have to work through her. He has to get all kinds of information, Toby. Um, excise tax information, what the tax was last year, all that kind of information has to come out of the assessor, excuse me, the assessor's office, which Harold has worked with her and has provided. And she said at the end, "Oh, well, you don't qualify this year, maybe you'll qualify next year." So he asked her to send it in writing, and I've asked her to send it in writing, and we're gonna continue doing that until we get it in writing.
And what you're looking for in writing is the process to qualify for forty S.
And, and why we don't qualify, or-
Right.
-where we are at in qualification.
Could we ask what the formula is, how it gets calculated?
Yes, I will be glad to get you the formula, and you'll probably give it right back to me, because it is so complicated. Harold, Harold really worked very hard at this, and publicly, I'd like to, to thank him, because it took a lot of his time, and there's nothing we could have done from our office.
Okay.
I will put that down.
All right. Waylmer Road, Lunenburg Village, it's a continuance of the ZBAA for August twenty-eighth.
Yes.
So if anybody wanted to go to that public hearing, it's August twenty-eighth. White Listener Report, Marijuana, uh, Medical Marijuana Clinic, verbal update?
Well, I gave you a copy, which was a, um, sample copy. I talked to Joel about it, and he said it's a good sample copy. And, um, as we noted tonight, the fall town meeting might not be until December or January, but, um, when we spoke last, um, we were told we could proceed. So if you have any comment on the copy, the sample copy I gave you, or you feel anything should be added or not added, you're looking for a moratorium only at this point. You can look ahead, but they are, there are a lot of people, I shouldn't say that, there are some communities that are seeking this. And then there are communities that are going ahead. And Townsend told me they're not gonna do anything, cause they don't think any, but he's gonna put a marijuana clinic in the town of Townsend. It may be equally true of Lunenburg. But to be proactive and cover everything, uh, I would strongly recommend that we go ahead and do the moratorium bylaw.
Well, we've already voted to do that.
We've already voted to do that.
So, you know, need, we, we just need to establish the moratorium that we're gonna bring to town meeting-
Okay.
-in December. Yeah, we as a board voted to do the-
Okay. Did you, may I ask you this? Are you satisfied with the sample model?
Um, I would have to be refreshed on it again to-
Okay. If you don't have copies handy, let me know.
Okay. All right. Fee Schedule update?
I don't have an update, because the gal that you, the, the question that you asked was, what was Shirley's basic fees and, uh, for submittals?
Mm-hmm.
And then what, why would they, what would half of that be? I have placed a call into Shirley. She's on vacation. Got a message back that she will call me.
Okay, perfect. I think there were two towns.
Harvard as well.
There were two towns. There was Shirley and another town that said what their, you know, their regular annual fee.
I will double-check that.
And we didn't know what that was.
Yeah, and we didn't get it in the minutes. It must not have been on.
No problem. But there were two.
Okay.
All right. Action files, anything under the, the citizen survey?
It's ready to go as soon as the IT man is. We, I added the two things. What Damon suggested was an explanation and the marijuana question. I have met with the, uh, Senior Council on Aging, and I'm gonna do some seminars with them, which they received very well.
Okay.
Question about the survey, I was just looking-
Nathan, go ahead.
That was in the packet this week, and I, I must have overlooked this before, but the question about, uh, for job-related travel, I might, I must have missed, I, my understanding was there was gonna be a question there about, like, what specific town you worked in.
Oh, you wanted to be that specific? It does not say so on, on the thing. You wanted, I could rerun them, I guess, and-
I, yeah, I mean, if, oh, you printed them out?
Yeah, we're ready to go with them. See, we're gonna do it two ways. We're gonna do it on Survey Monkey.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep.
And then we're going to put two baskets we have prepared to go into Town Hall, Ritter Building.
That's okay, you don't need to reprint them for that.
Okay. All right, library too. Okay, all right.
And you already made all the copies?
Yes.
Okay.
And that, okay, the VBD-
For the action file, go ahead.
Okay. I have nothing under the action file, and let me tell you, except what the DPW request was. If there's any question on any roadway in town, others, other than a project we're working on, he has a form on his, um, website that he would like use. It is very, much easier for him, instead of going from one to the other, is to fill out that form. He will attend to it and get back.
He who? He who?
I'm sorry, the DPW Director.
Thank you.
I scanned the Permit Extension Act, because I did not think that was something you've seen recently, as recent, as just for your, your information. Now, you have two or three things that were submitted. Town acquisition land for Town Beach, I think Nathan, you did that. And Town Center, I think that was, uh, Matthew.
Yep.
And, um, the Hazard Mitigation Plan, those were repeat, because I have not had any direction then from them. But I can think that probably the, um, Town Center thing should come under the, um, goal plan that we made for this evening, don't you think?
Sure.
Okay. All right, um-
I have a comment on the Hazard Mitigation, but I have to find it. You can, we can come back to it.
May I proceed then?
Sure, please, please.
Uh, meeting schedule? The next meeting is September ninth, and that will be in Town Hall. September twenty-third, which will be in the Ritter Building. And then you're down to Madam Chair, if there's any member issues or comments.
Okay, and on the September ninth, we're gonna have the updated goals.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right. Anything with the, the, um, meeting schedule? Everybody fine with that? Members issues? Any members issues?
I'm, I'm gonna back up to the, uh, the Lunenburg Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Please go, yes.
Um, in there, it says that we, as a planning board, are currently looking into reviewing zoning bylaws and reg- zoning bylaws and regulations to determine the best way to accomplish all flood-related hazards mitigations. I have not heard anything about that.
Well.
Are we looking?
I haven't had anything more about that, we were given that, that update, the plan update, as a recommendation, and I submitted it to you, because I expected you, as a board, to look at it and see if there's any way you, or direction you want to go. That was scanned to you, was not in your packet?
I'm sorry?
Was, that was scanned to you, Matthew, is it not in your packet?
I'm not sure, the Hazard Mitigation Update?
Yes.
Yes, that's what I'm reading from.
Okay.
And in that, from that meeting, they stated that this board is reviewing zoning bylaws specifically for flood-related hazard mitigation.
That has been in the past, that probably came forth where you go, and I keep these things going if I don't get a direction response.
I just wanted to comment, make sure that we were aware that that was publicized.
So, now let me piggyback off of Matthew, are you waiting for a response from this board on something?
I think you should be looking at it, and I'm not asking you to respond, I am asking you to look at it and see, as a board, if you wish to do anything further.
Why was that not pointed out?
Well, what I would do is I would put that on September 9th agenda for us to look at, and if we need to do anything, we'll move on that, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Does that work?
Yep.
We'll put it right on the agenda for the 9th?
Yep.
And then we'll go from there. Does that work for everybody? Perfect. All right, anything else under Action Files before we go on? Anything anybody wants to talk about? No, perfect.
Thank you.
All right, members issues. Matthew, we'll start with you, do you want me to start with Nathan and work my way down? Give you a break?
Whatever you would like, Ms. Chairperson.
Go ahead, we'll start with you and just bring it on home.
Okay, very good. Speaking of the New England Farm project, has, that has been approved, I mean, it's obviously, it's in construction.
Yes, the plan has been approved.
Was, there were no order of conditions issued for the plan review?
I can't remember. For New England Farms, were there any order of conditions from the planning board?
Yes, we gave them.
Directives.
Yeah, a permit, yes.
Yes, we did give them a permit, were there any?
We always put some directions on it, yes.
Directives and.
You want a copy of that, Nathan?
That would be great if I could have that, also.
I don't mean Nathan, I meant Matthew, excuse me.
The plan set that was distributed for us does not have board signatures on it, so I really can't be sure if this was actually what was approved. I mean, and.
The permit does have signatures on it, as far as I am aware of.
The plan set that you distributed to the members when we requested documents, it doesn't have any signatures. And again, I reviewed it fairly thoroughly for a couple hours, and there are numerous errors.
If you're speaking about the design plans, we typically don't sign the design plans. We will sign the subdivision for the land, the ANR plans, but the only other thing that we would sign would be the findings and the directives associated with the plan.
Oh, so it's site review?
Right.
Only, okay, I'm getting it. I'm slow, thank you.
No problem.
Thank you, Toby.
Okay, does that make sense?
Yeah, so whose responsibility was it to review the plans, ZBA?
On.
I mean, the design plans.
For what?
New England Farms, he's still under.
No, they, she, he came under Development Plan Review, which is different than a subdivision submittal, and ZBA gave him the permit.
But our reviewing engineer would be working with those plans to make sure that they're in compliance according to the plans. And the building, of course, is through the building official.
Okay.
Okay.
Very good, thank you.
Members issues. Anything else from you, Matthew?
No, thank you.
Toby?
I have none.
Damon?
Not tonight, nothing, thanks.
All right, I just want to clarify, one thing I have is that when we, as a board, if we direct Marion, the Planning Director, to do something, we as a board have to vote, and she goes and she does that thing. We just need to make sure, if we have a question, by all means, you call the Planning Director, and she can answer your question. We just can't direct her to do work without the board's approval of that work. So not one member can call Marion and say, "Okay, Matthew, I know you've been sending a lot of emails, and I don't, I have read them all, and I don't know that you're directing her, but just make sure that we're not, if there's something you need, something we're looking at, that it's a board decision, we're going to look at this, pull up these plans. If it's something just for your thought process, then you bring it up here, and then we would direct her to go do that."
Sure, yeah, no, I believe that everything I've been emailing about has been.
Yeah, I just wanted to reaffirm that for everybody, that we directed as a board. That was it for my members issue. And again, I just want to thank you all for the hard work and volunteering and being patient with all of us as we learn our new roles. Anything else? Any public comment? Seeing none. I would, do we have to go to executive session?
Mm-hmm.
So I would make a motion to adjourn and return on September 9th.
I second that motion. I move the motion.
Thank you.
Okay, I second it.